The following video contains explicit language which may be offensive to some viewers or inappropriate for children. The content within this video is intended for mature audiences only.
Hey everybody, it's Jeff. I hope you're having a good day. It's cold here in Maine today, but it's sunny. So, there's no wind to speak of to make it worse, but people are still out doing things. And went down to Applebee's to have lunch and got some groceries and did a few chores. And so that was basically my day up to this point. Like I said, it was nice out. And I hear that we're supposed to get some rain coming up here in the middle of the week. So that'll be good because they can get rid of some of that damn snow on the ground out there. It's because it's like the surface is like stone hard because it's ice, you know? And when it's like that, you can't even walk on top of it, you'll slip and fall. So I got a couple of videos. This first one is from Kyle Kalinsky and he's going to be talking about a whole bunch of town halls that didn't go very well for MAGA, okay, and Trump. There's a lot of angry people out there and people were showing up, you know, ready to engage into debate here with some of these people. And it didn't go so well for the guests that showed up to talk to the public. A lot of them simply were caught off guard. You know, I don't know. I mean, unless, I don't see how people can be caught off guard, you know, unless they're not paying attention to the public's opinion about things, okay? I mean, what do they do? They live in a bubble or something? Anyway, let's go to that video here and then we'll discuss that on the other side.
Alright guys, so last week we talked about all of these Republican town halls where furious voters showed up and they were absolutely berating these congresspeople. Now understand, it was not just Democrats. It just wasn't. Sure, there were some Democrats in the room, but there were a lot of independents. And now we're at the point where there's a lot of conservatives. There's a lot of MAGA supporters in that room. And the reason that they're showing up is they're actually being deeply impacted by the brazen cuts of Doge and Elon Musk. And when things impact, it's all fun and games until something impacts you personally. And then it's like, whoa, 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 hold on. I don't want the leopards to eat my face. I wanted them to eat the other people's faces. That's the gist of it, right? And so that's why you've seen all of these town hall rooms are lily white. Old white people from wall to wall, but they are furious and they are screaming at their congresspeople. What are you gonna do to hold these assholes accountable? Right? You got questions about Trump just announced he's a king? And you're gonna sit there and take that? One of the founding principles of this country is that we don't bow to a king. I just saw a poll on this, by the way. They asked the American people, like, should Trump be a king? Do you want Trump to be a king? And you might be surprised to hear the number is only 7%. Meaning even the overwhelming majority of Trump's own voters are like, nah dog, that's a little too far. Right? So let's start with this. Representative Harsh Barger? Harsh Barger? Ridiculous name, but anyway. She does a town hall event. Shout out to Tennessee Holler, which got us this video here. And listen to what she says and how furious the crowd is.
Elon Musk don't get paid.
Eight million dollars a day. Eight million dollars a day.
It's rejected. I want you to listen and I want to talk to you, but you gotta be respectful.
But we want the truth. But you said Elon Musk doesn't make any money from our government. He makes eight million dollars a day from government.
If he has contracts, that's not my department, honey. If he has contracts-
It's government contracts. Who pays those government contracts?
They actually implemented in place before this year. When you listen to propaganda news and you don't go to the source.
Listen to that crowd, bro. They are not buying it.
Let me ask you something. Have any of you belonged to a Democratic agency that had paid you income?
None of your business.
None of my business. Where does she sign, okay?
She knows she's caught. This is, we've heard a lot of Republicans say Elon's not even getting paid, bro. He's not even getting paid. Well, first of all, his net worth has gone up, what? Tens of billions? Hundreds of billions of dollars? Since effectively getting into office as the shadow president? That's point number one. Point number two, as this lady points out, he gets eight million dollars a day in US taxpayer subsidies. Beyond that, he's shaking down the taxpayers even more and taking more subsidies. He's trying to cancel a Verizon contract for flight safety and give that contract to Starlink. Him and Trump just committed fraud and stole 400 million dollars for Tesla. Cause Joe Biden sent, I believe the number was 438,000 dollars to Elon for Tesla. They backdated the papers and changed the number from 438,000 to 400 million. He is a fucking lying crook. That's what he is. By the way, we were wrong about how much tax money Elon has gotten so far. The number I had been going with is what I had read, which was Elon's taken 20 billion dollars in US tax money as corporate welfare or a subsidy for his various businesses. I'm wrong. It was actually 38 billion as was recently reported. So the guy is the biggest welfare queen in America. He's also, by the way, according to his brother, he was originally an illegal immigrant. So he came here, illegal immigrant, welfare queen, hypomanic ketamine addict robber baron. And this is the guy who's calling the shots, who's making all the decisions that are impacting all of us. So she got absolutely reamed over this, but again, we're just getting started here. So this is Representative Keith Self, town hall in Texas. And yet again, we have a crowd that is not buying what they're selling.
The other one is a Doge program.
So he brought up, he said the Doge program and the audience just erupts in boos. Oh my God. So he's saying, look, this is like Bill Clinton. Bill Clinton slashed the social safety net also, which by the way, that's true. But that's like part of the horrible legacy of Bill Clinton. Welfare reform was abysmal. Glass-Steagall, which was deregulation for Wall Street was abysmal. These are the things people bring up as the key failures of the Bill Clinton administration. But by the way, what he's saying is not technically true because what? When Bill Clinton slashed all these social programs, which he shouldn't have done. Again, that was bad. But when he did it, it went through Congress. It went through the proper legal process. Again, it was bad policy. I'm against it, but it went through Congress. Elon is doing it unilaterally, but this is their new talking point to try to weasel out of accountability. It's like, bro, this is just like, it's all about funding, waste, fraud and abuse, bro? And it's all about government efficiency and like, this is, this is what like Bill Clinton did and stuff, bro? It has nothing to do with the waste, fraud and abuse. Let me ask you a question. How many fraud charges have been brought up since Elon's been doing Doge? I'll wait. The answer is zero. Literally zero. There is no fraud. That is a lie. These are anti-government fundamentalists who want to get rid of every good part of the government that actually helps regular people so they can loot the treasury. That's what an argument, right? It's like, bro, don't look at the horrible stuff that Elon is doing. Because in the early 1990s, there was a Democratic president that also did horrible stuff. Like, oh, okay, I guess we'll all leave then. Like what the fuck are you expecting from this? These people are absolutely furious. They are furious. Okay, I got one more for you and you guys are gonna love this one. So this is Roger Marshall, okay, US Senator for Kansas. I don't even know who this guy was. And he's a senator? Okay. Look at his AI ass face, bro. Hold on, I have to, I have to show you his face. Look at that AI ass face. What the fuck are we looking at? This is like every, every US Senator in the country is like this right here. Right? What's the, there's that great meme that's like Senator Holden Bloodlust or something? And it's, it's a guy sitting in a wheelchair looking decrepit, being like, we should bomb more countries or something like that. This is what it is. This is the, by the way, this face also looks like this guy like wakes up and shovels money down his throat for breakfast because he's that corrupt, right? Like just, just sucking off the military industrial complex all day, every day. I mean, the look says it all. Okay, but here we go. He's doing a town hall and this gentleman asked a great question. He brings up the fact, hey man, um, why is it that Doge is screwing over veterans in particular? We covered the story the other day that they canceled, I believe it was a thousand VA contracts, was it? I think it was VA, no, it wasn't VA contracts. It was some other government agency, but they canceled $2 billion worth of contracts. And it was a thousand contracts in total. Come to find out, all of that money was going towards small businesses run by disabled veterans. Again, if this was a Democratic administration, you would literally never hear the end of that. That would be the main thing everybody talked about for a week straight. And they would say, these Democrats hate our country. They hate our troops. They're unpatriotic. They're traitors. They're screwing over the most vulnerable people among us. This is unacceptable and we should fucking impeach a Democratic president for doing that. That's what the conversation would be if this was a Democrat. Since it's a Republican, it's basically buried. Almost nobody's talking about it. We're, one of the only ones talking about it. But thank God the American people are noticing. And so this guy comes and asks the question. Watch what happens. The AI generated Senator basically cancels the event and walks out early.
...is doing right now as far as cutting out those jobs. A huge percentage of those people, and I know you care about the veterans. The veterans.
Yes.
And that is a damn shame.
Yes.
That is a damn shame.
I'm not a Democrat, but I'm worried about the veterans, man. Well, I healed a tomb, one of my elders and I appreciate his comments. I think it's a great, I'm not gonna, we don't have time for everyone to stand up. I do got two more commitments today. Appreciate everybody making the drive out and God bless America.
So look guys, we all understand these politicians are deeply corrupt. But what you're underestimating is also how stupid they are and spineless they are. This guy has a spine of Jell-O. The reason why he's not gonna speak up and say anything like, we should rehire those veterans or they shouldn't have done those cuts in the first place. The reason why is because he's afraid if he says that Elon hears it, Trump hears it, and they post some tweets about him and then, you know, MAGA gets really angry and basically calls his office a thousand times. He's fearing for his safety in a scenario like that. And so instead of telling the truth, instead of standing up and going, you know what? They shouldn't have cut those jobs for veterans. You know what? We should hire those veterans back. Or hey, at the very least, us in the Senate, we need to use our power. The House and the Senate need to use our power to check Elon Musk and check Donald Trump. He's refusing to tell the truth. He's refusing to say that. And he's such a bad politician, he can't even do some sophistry and hit you with a line of bullshit to sort of spin it to make it look like, oh, I'm totally on your side. But yeah, here's the deal in DC. He doesn't even have that ability. He literally runs away. He cancels the event early, says God bless America and runs out the door as fast as possible. These people are shameless. They're morons. They're disgusting. They don't give a fuck about the veterans or anybody else in this country except the top 1% and the robber barons and Donald Trump. Guys, this is who they are. This is not an anomaly. This is, this is the core of these scumbags and charlatans. This is the core of them. Running out the door when, hey man, a lot of veterans are losing jobs because of what Doge is doing, what Elon's doing and what Trump's okay with him doing. Oh, well, I want to thank everybody for coming out. God bless America. I'm gone. Can you believe this? Can you believe this? Is there, are there no Republican politicians in the entire fucking country? With balls? With balls? Are there none of you? And the answer is no. There are none of them. So guys, I told you what our mission is. Guys like this jackoff need to be more afraid of the resistance than they are of Trump and MAGA. They need to feel like, oh, actually, the scary thing for me to do is to go along with Elon and Trump. That's what he needs to feel like. And as of right now, I gotta be honest with you, the public is doing a phenomenal job of trying to get us to that point. It's true. You got so many phone calls to Congress, it's almost like the phone lines are breaking. Endless phone calls, endless protests. These town halls are really, really ramping up. It is not just Democrats in there despite what the propaganda is from the right. By the way, what was Mike Johnson's reaction to this and the Republican reaction to these town halls? They go, how about we just don't do any town halls? That's your reaction? The other thing is to say, oh, everybody who's asking a question that's critical is just a Democratic plan. Bro, you got another thing coming if you believe that. No, this anger, this fury is as real as a heart attack. Does this dude who's asking this question, does he look like he's a bleeding heart liberal? Does he look like he's a hardcore lefty? I think not. And you all know that. Literally one of the guys chimes in and says, I'm not a Democrat, but I'm concerned about the veterans. This is unconscionable, bro. He ran away like a little bitch. He ran away like a little bitch. So this is what we're seeing, man. This is what we're seeing all across the country. And guess what? It's only gonna get worse because these things that are being done by Trump and Elon are completely and utterly indefensible.
Hey y'all. Alright, well, as you can see, Kyle really explains it best. And the way that he does. There's a lot of anger out there and it's only gonna get worse, right? Because hey, how far are we into this presidency? Four and a half, five weeks, okay? Yeah, it's just, it's just beginning and there's already this much anger out there, okay? In a few more months, Christ, we could have fighting on the goddamn streets out there. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. And you know, right now, people's opinions about Trump are not just tanking here at home, but they're tanking abroad, the globe, right? The rest of the world, okay? They won't say it, okay? They're trying to be diplomatic about it, but they don't like Trump, you know? And you know, I feel like, you know, we're not, the United States is not cutting itself off from, well, okay, I'll put it like this. The rest of the world's not cutting us off from, you know, their allies. We're cutting ourselves off from them simply by Trump doing what he's been doing, okay? Siding with Putin, you know, going against Ukraine, okay? These are big things that matter a lot to a lot of people, especially people here in the States who are, you know, their families come from Ukraine and there's a lot, alright? And so it's not, it's not a good sign when you have that much division nationally and internationally going on against, you know, this, this frigging idiot, you know? You know, this failed businessman. It's not good. It doesn't, it's not a very good thing. And you know, how we come out of this or turn this thing around really is, is really up to us. Because as you can see, the politicians that showed up to these town halls, they were on the defensive. The anger from the audiences directed at these people, you could, you could feel it, you know, in the air. People were really angered and sarcastic in their conversations and stuff, okay? The frustration is there. It's so thick, you know? And like I said, we're just a few weeks into this presidency and you know, I, it's amazing. I want to read this here, this post that a person had put up recently. It doesn't have a name, just a username, okay? But it says here, and this was put up about two hours ago. "I'm in Florida, a disabled combat veteran who suffered an injury in Iraq. I had worked on and off as the disability has allowed me. I had a procedure tomorrow scheduled for a month. No one called me to confirm, so I called. Took more than an hour to get ahold of someone, something that used to just take minutes a month ago. Then found out it was canceled and no one reached out. I now have to continue with the pain for who knows how long. Been a VA patient for almost 20 years and never had this happen or had so much trouble getting ahold of someone. I have voted three times against Trump. Was not a fan of Hillary or Biden. I actually liked Harris, but always knew Trump was a fraud and a con man. But even, I'm surprised, he and the spineless Republican congressman are letting Elon destroy the VA." Yeah, okay. And that's, that's a veteran, alright? And you know, there's, there's support for veterans out there to go around, okay? But you know, we're not, the veterans are not immune to what's being, what's going on, okay? We're, they're actually showing us just how little they give a shit about veterans and those people who fought for this country when the time had called them to do so, okay? And it's, it's indefensible. It's dishonorable for somebody in our government, okay? And it wasn't even a fucking guy that was elected to do what he's doing, okay? He's just some fucking asshole that was appointed by the president to do this. But a guy like that who doesn't even care about this country, okay? Elon Musk, I mean, who the fuck is, he's not even a goddamn, you know, patriot of the country in any way. Christ, he comes from a whole other country. He's over here to make money. That's all he's here for, okay? So what the hell does he care about our veterans? About the people that are citizens of this country? Why, why would he care? It's, it doesn't affect him, okay? Sure, he's, he's hurting financially right now with, with, you know, Tesla and all the stocks are still sliding downward. You know, people around the world are really angry at him, okay? Sure, that stuff's going on, but you think, you know, he's gonna change direction? You know, even with that happening? Of course not. So he doesn't care. He doesn't care. And he's attacking people who do care about the country, you know? Who put their life on the line for the country. I mean, who would you rather be siding with in this situation? You want to side with a guy who doesn't give two shits about the United States? Or do you want to stand with the person who, who gave everything, you know, to the United States? Okay? You people have common sense. You know where the answer is. So why do you side with a guy like Elon Musk who claims he's, he's trying to cut waste and fraud in the government and has yet to do that? Okay, what he's doing is he's just cutting, okay? He's just cutting. He's not looking for waste. He's not looking for fraud. He's just cutting. He's out there to chop back budgets. Why? Because all that extra money is gonna go to the rich. Okay? Now you want to talk about fraud? What he's doing, in my view, in my personal opinion, is fraud because he came in on this thing with a false agenda. He's not in there to try to help, you know, make our, you know, our budgets streamlined and more efficient. No, no, no. He's in there to steal out of that budget so that Trump can renew that fucking tax cut that he implemented when he was president the first time around, okay? Cause it's, it's gonna expire at the end of the year. He wants to re, you know, he wants to redeploy that fucking tax break at the end of the year. And he can't do it unless he cuts money out of other things in order to pay for it. I just, I feel like, you know, this is, this is so fucking crazy and you know, the outrage right now, I don't even think the people that are mad right now really understand the scope of all the things that's happened so far, okay? Sure, people are mad about their individual things that have been impacted so far, but have they really sat down and read all the things that he's done, that Trump has done? You know, and what's, what Musk has done so far? I mean, some of these people probably do, but I don't think enough Americans really have, have any knowledge so far about all the things that Trump has done in the last five weeks, okay? I really don't think they do. Okay? Sure, people are pissed off about what happened to the veterans, but it goes beyond that, way beyond that, okay? And sure, we all saw that, that stupid fucking meeting in the Oval Office there between Vance, Trump and Zelensky that all went to hell in a handbasket, okay? Yeah, but it goes beyond that even, okay? There's way more nuance to what's going on in that whole situation, okay? Than just that one day in the Oval Office, they had a fight, okay? There's a whole big fucking bunch of events happening around that, okay? And poor Zelensky stepped right into the bear trap, you know? And you know, I don't know if he realized that this was gonna happen to him. I mean, I know he didn't support Trump, okay? Biden was his friend and I'm sure Biden kind of told him, look, this guy here, if he gets in there, you're not gonna get shit from him, okay? You know, and I, and I think everybody was thinking, you know, well, Kamala's a much, you know, is the superior candidate, okay? There's no way Trump's gonna beat her and what happened? So you know, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, Zelensky really, you know, I, I don't know what, what the thing, but he is kind of caught in the middle now. Not just, you know, between the United States and Russia, but caught in the middle because now the rest of the world is gonna have to, is gonna, is trying to pick up, you know, the, the lack of support that he's probably going not to get, you know, from the United States. And you know, and the funny thing is, is that the world leaders that are saying, they're standing with Zelensky also are saying, we can't do the whole thing without the United States. And you know, my, my reaction to that is, well, you people are gonna have to do what we did during the Cold War and that means you're gonna have to spend big on defense, okay? Because from now on, and I think they found out the hard way, you can't depend on the United States. You can't. Because the way we do our business here, government wise, is so wishy washy. One minute we're with them, the next we're not, okay? You can't, you can't have an ally that can't stay consistent like that, okay? You just can't do that. You can never trust them to stay consistent. Four years goes by like that, you know? And before you know it, I mean, people are like, whoa, I thought the United States stood with us. And it's like, no, they got a new president now and he don't stand with us at all, okay? That's why I say, I don't think the rest of the world really realized that until now when the time was needed for the United States to get involved with helping a sovereign country. It was only then, I think, when people realized, look, the United States is just too goddamn, you know, broken. You know, their, the system of government does not make sense, okay? They can't stay united on everything, you know? And when, when they have a president that does something, half, the other half of the country is against it. You know, they're just, there's just too much, you know? Too much doubt for anybody to enter into any kind of agreement with this country, okay? So I think it would be best for the rest of Europe to simply start building up a military equivalent to what the United States has, which means everybody's gonna have to start stockpiling nukes and they're gonna have to start building up troops, tanks, guns, you know, everything, the works. They're gonna have to arm themselves like they didn't do during the Cold War and the United States did, but they're going to have to go, go back to that footing now, okay? Because they can't depend- now. Okay? Because they can't depend on the US. They can't depend on the US. And that's unfortunate because we used to be a, a, a country that we all had a common denominator here. Okay? We all did. You know, when we would unify to do something, we were all unified together. Okay? No matter who was the president, it would, it would remain. But now times have changed because we've become so polarized in this country over the decades that now, uh, you know, whatever the one side is doing, we gotta take the opposite. Okay? Even if they can't come up with a reason to take the opposite, they have to take an opposite. They can never agree or they, they won't allow themselves to agree. Okay? And like I said, for a lot of people, you know, reality doesn't sink home until the problems of the government land on their fucking doorstep. And then all of a sudden, now they get involved. That's what's kinda happening right now. Okay? The buyer remorse and all that shit. A lot of, lot of MAGA people have already been impacted by what Trump has done already. And they're not happy about it. Okay? And that's gonna continue to, uh, grow, uh, as time goes on because Trump ain't done. He's still going at it. Okay? He's only done about, you know, a third of, of Project 2025, and he's still got way more to go. Okay? So if you're not happy with him now, you're gonna be hap-, uh, more unhappy with him later on. You're gonna be fucking bloodthirsty, hungry. Okay? That's what's gonna happen. He's gonna lose more support. He's gonna be the president with the lowest approval, uh, in the, in the history of this country. Okay? Lowest sitting president. Uh, and, and it's not like he cares. He doesn't care. He only cares about keeping his ass out of fucking prison. And like, uh, you know, like I've said before, Trump's got a lot of skeletons in his closet and he knows this. And if he can outlast justice, then hey, he's in, he's, he feels he's home free. Okay? So anyway, let's, uh, let's go to a commercial break and we'll come back.
I'm Alex Curtis, Mollupsman in Maine, and this is me.
I'm Roxy Sugar, and this is me.
I'm Eric Hopkins. I'm an artist, and this is me.
This, this is me.
Me.
This is me.
This is me.
At the end of the journey, the main thing is you. Original.
Feeling my husband with eight inches was like reliving our first time. Thanks to the salt trick, he makes me gush like a broken pipe. And just last month, I was ready to divorce my husband, but then he showed me his new eight-inch magic wand. Now, I can barely hold it in my hand. This salt trick is hands down the biggest advantage any man can have heading into 2025. I wasn't kidding when I said you should take it easy with this trick. It can turn a sad little twig into a raging anaconda. It's ridiculously simple, and it's heartbreaking to see so many men missing out on the chance to finally make their women happy. So far, this easy homemade trick has helped over 29,000 men naturally increase both size and thickness. This is the same secret top-paid adult film actors use to keep their bats way above average. It's also how they manage to handle three, four, or even five women in a row without losing their stamina. The best part? It works for men of all ages, takes just 30 seconds before bed, and can give you some incredible results in no time. If you want to skip the details and go straight to the video, just click the "Watch Now" button below to learn how to pull off this simple but powerful trick tonight. You should probably watch it alone, if you know what I mean. Don't waste any more time. Watch it before it gets taken down or you can't find this video anymore. Your wife or girlfriend will thank you for the rest of her life.
He was the first president elected with the help of a hostile foreign power. That's not a hoax. It's the conclusion of the Republican-led Senate Intelligence Committee and every national security agency. And what did the Russians get helping elect Trump in 2016? Turns out they got a lot. For decades, the greatest adversary of the Soviet Union and Vladimir Putin's Russia was the Republican Party. Now the Republican Party is the heart of pro-Putin movement in American politics. That's why Donald Trump nominated Tulsi Gabbard, Moscow's sweetheart, for a critical national intelligence position. That's why he loves J.D. Vance's vicious attacks on Ukrainian freedom fighters. What happened to Republicans standing for freedom? Tens of thousands of Americans died fighting a European dictator. Now, an American president embraces a dictator at war with freedom. When Donald Trump was inaugurated, remember who else was celebrating? Vladimir Putin and Donald Trump, together again.
Be a part of the entertainment value of a lifetime.
I loved it.
This is the best performance I've seen in a lifetime.
I loved the show.
I liked it very much. He's a very entertaining man. It's well worth the money.
Now appearing in Charlatan, coming to Halifax November 6th through the 18th, and St. John, November 20th through the 26th.
All right, everybody. Welcome back. Okay. So this next video is from Ben Masalas. Uh, and he's gonna be talking about how a lot of the, uh, uh, Trump voters are really upset now. And, uh, he's gonna read some posts that some of these folks have written, uh, just to show, you know, how dissension is, is growing in the ranks. And so early in Trump's presidency, it's not a good sign. Cause like I said in the previous segment, you know, by the end of the year, Christ, Trump's not gonna have anybody on his side, you know, if he keeps this shit up. All right. So let's go to that video there and then, uh, well, uh, I'll catch you on the other side, talk, talk about it.
This are spreading fast and furious across the country. Trump voters are turning against him as he destroys our economy, destroys our federal government, and destroys our alliances. Take a look at this post right here by a Trump voter. "White House Has Fallen. I Never Thought I Would See The Day, And I Was An Avid Trump Supporter, But He Went Too Far With Ukraine. They Are Trying To Fight For Their Right To Be A Nation. I Honestly Thought That America Stood For This, But No More Crazy Times." That follows the meeting between Donald Trump and President Zelensky, where Trump and J.D. Vance attacked Zelensky in front of the world press and blamed Zelensky for Russia's unlawful invasion of Ukraine. Here is a Cuban-American's post who was a big Trump supporter. "No Longer. I Supported Trump For Three Reasons. One, His Tough Policy Against Cuba And Venezuela. Two, Because He Promised To End The War Which No People Should Experience. Three, Because The Previous Administration Was A Disaster. But I Do Not Support What Is Agreed. He Is Behaving Like A Real Clown. Which Will Be The Future? United States Allied With Totalitarian Russia? And Europe With Communist China? There Will Be Nothing Left To Fight For." How about this one? "A Boomer Dad Learns That Trump Doesn't Get Tariffs. F Around And Find Out." The Boomer Dad Goes To His Son. "Markets Suck. Technology Is A Wreck. This Week, NASDAQ Is Down By 10%. What's Kyle Have To Say? US Treasury Or REIT Bonds? Trump Needs To Be Educated On Tariffs And Its Impact On US Consumers And Inflation." To Which His Son Responded, "Dad, He's An Idiot, Dad. You Can't Educate Someone Who Is Categorically Dumb. He Will Push Us Into A Recession," I Think A Depression, "And Another Healthcare Crisis." Another Trump supporter. "Trump Needs To Cut The Shit Out. Like, I Voted For Him, And Right Now I'm Getting Screwed. Crypto Is Crashing Due To All Of His Tariffs." He didn't even have the decency to warn us Americans what would happen to our investments from all of his tariffs. Thanks a lot. Not That I Haven't Been Kicked In The Teeth Enough Now To Know I'm Getting Screwed By The Guy I Voted For. I Wonder If He Knows What The Results Are From Citizens Who Just Snap Because They Simply Can't Take A Beating Anymore. Cost Of Living Are More Than I Can Financially Handle Right Now, And My Entire Investments Have Crashed More Than 70% From His Tariffs. He Should Have Warned Us Citizens What Was Going To Happen, So We Could Have Pulled Out. Now I'm Holding Bags Of Nothing That Are Worth Less Than Nothing. I Hate My Life Right Now, And I Am So Miserable. I Can't Take Much Longer. This Mother Effor Is Going To Force Me To A Blah, Blah, Blah. You Get The Point." Barbara Hamlin goes, "I'm Going To Say It And It Needs To Be Said. I'm A Die-Hard Republican, And Yes, I Voted For Trump. With That Said, The Hypocrisy The Republican Party Is Showing Is Appalling At Best. I Would Never Have Voted For All That Has Happened In Just A Month. I Didn't Vote For Elon Musk. I Didn't Vote For The President Of Ukraine To Get Ousted, And I Sure As Hell Didn't Vote For Half Of Americans To Be Laid Off. You Literally Voted For The Guy Whose Punch Line Is 'Ya Fired, Ya Fired.'" This whole thing is he fires people, right? That's one of his things. "He Hates Contractors And Doesn't Pay Bills, And He Hates Our Allies And Loves Putin." That's like literally his thing. "You're Fired. He Hates Our Allies. He Doesn't Pay Bills. He Loves Putin." It's pretty basic stuff, but I guess you didn't figure that one out, Barbara. "Yes, I Understand Bringing Jobs Back To America, But Now The Job Market Is Flooded Because Of How This Was Implemented. Yes, I Understand Tariffs, But It's Just Being Passed Down To The Now Unemployed. Yes, I Am One Of Those Innocent Bystanders That Got Laid Off Due To Foreign Aid, And My Heart Is Broken. Trump Administration, Do Better." Summer Badama writes, "Donald J. Trump DOGE Subcommittee. I'm An Army Veteran Disabled. I Have Five Years Of Government Service, But Because I Changed Agencies, My Service Didn't Count Toward A New Probationary Period. I Had To Start Over With The New Probationary Period Because HR Rules Are Stupid. I Lost My Job. None Of Us Should Have To Endure This, But Especially Those Who Should Have Protections We've Earned. I Voted For You Three Times And Believe In What You Want To Do, But This Isn't The Way. I've Been In A Bullshit AI Job Market For Months. I Can't Afford To Go Back Into It. I Have A Husband Who Is Disabled And Children. This Is Disgusting, Irrational, And Wrong On So Many Levels. Grabbing The Fresh Fruit Because It's Low-Hanging And Leaving The Rotten To Hide In The Trees. It's Not Doing What's Right For The American People. The Rotten Fruit Won't Go Away, And Just Because Someone Responds To An Email Lying About What They Did Last Week Isn't Going To Do Shit Either." Abi-Libi goes, "I Voted For An Administration That Would Stop Human Trafficking At Our Borders. I Voted To Get Rapists And Pedophiles Off The Street. Trump's Actions Freeing The Tate Brothers Who Were Arrested On Sex Trafficking Charges In Romania With Minors Was A Stunning Betrayal Of His Mandate." Okay, let's be clear. He didn't have a mandate. Under 50% of voters actually voted for him. Two, Donald Trump's, like, closest friend was Jeffrey Epstein. Trump's all over the Epstein phone logs, depositions, flight logs. Trump said Epstein's a great guy who likes women on the younger side. Trump bragged that he used his beauty pageants to look at girls naked without their consent in the locker room. Donald Trump was found liable for sexual assault. Donald Trump is on camera bragging about sexually assaulting women by grabbing their genitals without their consent. Donald Trump spoke in front of young Republicans a year and a half ago or so, where he said the most courageous thing he did, according to someone in the military he knows, is when he referred to sexually assaulting women as locker room talk. That was the bravest act braver than any form of military valor. Uh, Jeffrey Epstein would find the girls to traffic, or some of them at least, at Mar-a-Lago, like Virginia Jew Frey, who Ghislaine Maxwell, who was Epstein's, uh, co-conspirator trafficker, would go to Mar-a-Lago, found Jew Frey, who was homeless, and then got a job at Mar-a-Lago, brought over to Epstein, uh, was forced to give a massage, and then Epstein then trafficked her. Donald Trump held beauty pageants for like teenage girls and girls who are younger than teenage age. Uh, we use, Donald Trump wished Ghislaine Maxwell well at her sex trafficking trial. Donald Trump gave the Epstein binder to a woman who wore free Ghislaine, uh, t-shirts. I, you know, wa-, I can, like, I can keep on going, but, uh, facts matter. Evidence ma-, evidence matter. What are you talking about? Like, this stuff was known. "North Idaho, The U.S. Department Of Agriculture Changes Felt In North Idaho. North Idaho's Outdoor Recreation And Agrarian Industries Will Take New Form As Federal Efforts Initiated By DOGE," goes on to talk about how "In Boundary County, Government Agencies Own About 75% Of The Land, Where Their Main Responsibilities Include Managing Hiking Trails And Facilitating Timber Sales. With Lumber Producers Such As Idaho Forest Group, Local Farmers Benefit From These Agencies Through Environmental Stewardship Programs And Expert Consultations They Provide, But Rapid Changes To The U.S. Department Of Agriculture And Its Subsidiaries Such As Forest Service And Natural Resource Conservation Service Have Left Local Officials And Agriculture Business Wondering How Agencies And Local Industries Will Adapt." And we're talking about massive layoffs. Wanna go into the Republican area in Oregon? Um, there's one, there's one, there's a few Oregon Republican areas. Um, one's represented by this MAGA Republican Representative Cliff Bentz, who, he was at one of these town halls that we've been, uh, covering. And at his town hall, he said, "If you came here to yell at me, I can just leave," he said. Um, a lot of the voters though, that were there were not like Democrats. They were rural voters, um, Republicans there who were absolutely pissed. And then this article, by the way, um, focuses from the, uh, Oregonian, Oregon Live. They do, they do great reporting there. They talk about, take a look at this town, this MAGA Republican mayor, uh, Gilliam County Town of Condon, three hours east of Portland. He penned a letter to members of Congress talking about, "They're gonna lose a lot of jobs because of all of these DOGE cuts." He goes, "I See It As A Double-Edged Sword", Republican Mayor Dustin Hall, who voted for Trump. He told the Oregonian in Oregon Live, "We All Want Accountability. Where Are Tax Dollar, Where Are Our Tax Dollars Going? Is It Just An Open Checkbook?" But at the same time, speaking for Condon, "We're A Small, Rural, Geographical Area That Is Dependent On Grants." He said potential cuts could ravage his entire town. Um, and in that town, Trump defeated Kamala Harris by a more than two-to-one margin. Um, and the U.S. Department Of Agriculture is one of the biggest supporters of the farmers in that- And the U S Department of Agriculture is one of the biggest supporters of the farmers in that town. You know, who, who subsist off of that. But now they are getting screwed. And it was also getting screwed, people in the villages who voted for Trump, the villages in Florida, because the village's VA clinic is cutting benefits to veterans. This letter to the editor in the Village News, newspaper, talks about how the person at their VA clinic was like giddy with glee about some of the stuff that they were cutting and some of the veteran community care services. Bye bye, because one of the people who are being hit the most are veterans. Is that shocking though? Donald Trump called veterans suckers and losers. Donald Trump took five bone spur deferments to avoid the Vietnam War. Donald Trump attacked war heroes like the late, great Senator John McCain. Donald Trump loves Putin. Donald Trump hates America. I mean, he does. This is actions objectively. I mean, he's, he's doing Putin's talking points. Elon Musk, who's running the government, said that America needs to leave NATO. I mean, we've got the post where Elon talks about leaving NATO. How a veteran can support this guy is, is requires such mental gymnastics that I cannot understand ever. Take a look at this town in South Dakota. Federal cuts in Condington County Farm Service Agencies. A ton of jobs, a farming county that voted just shy of 70% Trump, loses its Farm Services Center, which connected farmers with government programs right before the planting season begins. How about the epicenter of Trump's support in Georgia? 66% in favor of Trump in 2024. They're not going to be able to sell their peanuts as part of the USAID contract that was used to help starving people. And I, I think even more depressing than what's going to happen in that Republican area are the people. First off, like this food exists. These peanut supplements are sitting in warehouses that were supposed to go to starving people in Africa and starving people who are about to die. And existing contracts are being canceled. Why? Because Trump hates contractors and likes to see innocent people die. So people are going to die now because, and, and businesses are going to get screwed and have to fire people and lose, and lose their jobs as Donald Trump guts these essential contracts. This is a MAGA meteorologist right over here. Kilgore is this guy's name. And he talks, he's pissed because of the National Weather Service being gutted and the NOAA being gutted. We have multiple chances for super tornado outbreaks through the middle of March. Now is not the time to carve up the NWS, the National Weather Service. We at Team Dominator have always been huge supporters of our friends at the National Weather Service. Even I cannot make a forecast without their valuable data and forecast model output. Please contact your representative in support of NWS. Remember those missed tornado warnings in Oklahoma in November due to the office being short stabbed? These problems could become more widespread with the firings. They will become more widespread with the firings. I mean, I mean, here's, what, what is it, you know, with you? What is it? That you've been so immersed and deceived by the manufactured rage algorithm that you MAGA's got so pissed off about? What a transgender, nine transgender athletes in the NCAA, volleyball player at San Jose State. What, what, what else are you mad about? Pronouns or something? What the hell is bothering you so much? That, that you, that you literally voted to like destroy yourself and your life and your family? You voted to destroy yourself because of something that wasn't impacting you ever? And now you, you still have some, you still have some nuance, right? Like even though I'm reading these people who regret it, they're still like, but only if I'm the good one. They're the bad ones. Like I, I, I'm trying to understand in their mind. How? I mean, I don't want, I, look. You effed around, you found out the leopards are eating your faces. The problem is, is that a lot of us, tens of millions of us, didn't vote for this. You voted for this, you're finding out. But we knew this was going to happen who were opposing Trump. We, we knew that he was a failure of a business person, that he ran most of his companies into the ground and went bankrupt. I, I could look at Trump's own financial statements in connection with Trump Media, which lost $400 million and only made 3.7 million in revenue and lost 400 million, where it talks about this business went bankrupt, that business went bankrupt, this business. Like five businesses went bankrupt, 10 companies or so that he licensed his name to, right around that, went out of business. He doesn't pay contractors. Like this stuff was all there. And, and you, and you, you were riled up because he told you that Haitians who were actually helping revive a town in Ohio were eating cats and dogs. Like, are you that dumb? I mean, seriously, I'm not trying to be rude. Like, you, you think that, you think that's, that that stuff happened? Like, like the oligarchs are now eating your lunch because you were worked up about a fake story about Haitians eating cats and dogs? Or, or, or a volleyball player in San Jose State who was not even a good volleyball player. I mean, no, I mean, I'm sure she's fine, but like, wasn't like, you know, the Olympian or something. I don't know. Explain it to me. Hit subscribe. Let's get to 5 million subscribers.
You know, if you voted for Trump, I have absolute zero sympathy for you. Okay, really? It's, you can't go around saying you weren't warned. I know a lot of people, a lot of MAGA people are going around saying, I didn't know he was gonna do this. You know what? He made it clear in his campaign what he was gonna do. The only thing he wouldn't admit to was the Project 2025 thing. But I think common sense would have, would have, if you had any, would have told you, yeah, he does know about it. Because J D Vance was part of the process that made that fucking manifesto, okay? So he knew about it. So let's get that on the table. And the fact that you people just wouldn't believe it shows that you were, were in denial even then that Trump was capable of doing the things that he's doing right now. You know, you guys, you voted for a convicted, a convicted felon, you know, instead of a law abiding prosecutor. So, you know, I can't feel bad for you if what Trump is doing is violating the law and upending your lives. Okay, he's a criminal. What do you think criminals do when they have power? Okay, I mean, we watched all kinds of movies from Hollywood, you know, telling us the story about how power corrupts, absolutely, you know? And still, we fall victim to people who are, you know, basically cut from the same cookie there, you know, about a person who's corrupt because of their power, their wealth. All right, and we expect that, oh, they're going to be good to us? Since when? Since when? You know, when are they, when is people like that ever been good to us? Okay, I'm sorry. But, you know, nobody does anything that, you know, that's wealthy, does anything good for anybody unless there's something in it for them. You know, tax break or some fucking thing, you know, they do these things. Very few wealthy people really give a shit, you know, about trying to be helpful in any way to their neighbors or, you know, their community or their city, the state or the, you know, they just won't do it. Instead, they're, they hire lawyers and they find ways to avoid paying taxes, you know? And I just, like I said, I got no sympathy for people that voted for Trump and are suffering right now. Okay. I mean, I'm sad that all of us who didn't vote for him and voted for Harris are going to suffer. But those who did vote for Trump, I don't care. You know, I hate everyone that empowered him again. I think that's pretty, I've been saying that, you know? And, you know, he belongs in prison. He doesn't belong in the White House. And I, like I said, it's just when these, when you read these comments that, you know, folks from MAGA are writing and stuff, you know? And you could hear the desperation in their words. And and I'm thinking, you know, the, what you're complaining about, I remember talking about in videos, you know? And I know other people who were saying the same thing on their shows or your podcasts and stuff, saying the same things, making the same warnings. And even with all that out there, they're trying to make it seem like we didn't know. Nobody told us. Why didn't they tell us? It's like, you didn't, you were expecting the guy who's fucking you over to tell you he's gonna fuck you over. That's what you're saying. No, that everybody else that was opposed to him were, was telling you why we're opposed to him and why he's gonna fuck you over. But you didn't want to hear it. Okay, you chose to side all, you know, 110% of your ears to Fox News and the, you know, whatever propaganda was coming from Trump. Okay, that's what you did. You glued your ears to just one side of the story. While the other side, who knew Trump better than you, understood what he was about. Christ, even his own family was trying to tell people about, don't vote for Trump. Okay, because he, this is, you know, he's not, he's gonna screw your life up. And even that, you know, you just kept finding darts to throw at anybody that had any opposition. Okay, to, to Trump. And now you're finding that all those darts you were throwing really were just imaginary because those darts meant nothing. The things that we were telling you were true. Okay, and you didn't stop it. You were trying to accuse Kamala Harris of being, oh, well, I don't trust her, you know, she's, so, you know, and you couldn't even explain why. And we all know the truth behind that. But the fact is, is you guys had more mistrust about her and you weren't even looking at your own guy. You weren't looking at him and seeing what he was doing in his rallies. He's sitting there telling you, you know, I don't care about you. I only want your vote. Remember when he said that? Okay, no, you guys, that went right over your head. You thought that was funny. No, he was telling you probably for the first time in his goddamn life, he actually said something truthful, you know? But that's, that's, that's what he did. And he told you and you told you, you know, he revealed in all of his, his rallies that he put together. He would reveal a little bit about his, you know, about who he is and stuff and that. And you guys, you, you didn't even see that. Of course, the rest of us did and we harped on it, you know, trying to get it out there to point out to people, look, this is what he said. Okay, but no, you guys are saying, oh, you're taking it out of context. You're twisting his words, yes and that. Okay, no, my friends, now you know, nothing that he was saying that we were pointing out was taken out of context. It was as it was heard and disseminated. Okay. And, you know, it's just, you know, other countries, like I said, they're really disappointed with us. And some don't even understand how Trump is even in the White House, considering that he was, as they understand it, you know, a person that's running for president can't be a convicted felon. But here he is, right? So a lot of people from other countries are, you know, and I see it'll pop up a lot in different blogs and stuff, saying, how is that possible? You know, well, the, and all I can say is the reason why it's possible is because the wheels of justice in this country did not move fast enough. Okay, Trump delayed, delayed and delayed. Okay. And he, he had judges that he paid off to keep delaying the process. Okay, remember Lou Cannon there? She, she was one of those that kept it. And plus he had the Supreme Court in his pocket. Okay, well, when you have that kind of clout in the justice system, yeah, you can get away with all kinds of shit. All right, but yeah, I mean, he was convicted of, of, of the rape and all that stuff and the other felonies. But nobody could decide on whether or not that was, you know, a reason to keep him from running. And I don't think anybody dared to try to deny him. You know, his, his run for the White House for a second time. And I think that's, that's what I think. And then, and it goes all the way back to why are these people afraid of him? Okay. And it was, and it's because of that. And you still see it even today. You see the rallies, right? In the, in the video, you saw those rallies. You saw how people, when they were confronted by the angry mob, they would just, you know, try to get away or, you know, or just try to throw bullshit at them that they weren't buying. Okay. And these, and then, you know, the people are, are saying, well, they're afraid to say anything or to agree with the crowd because hey, that could mean retaliation from Trump and his cronies are to, you know, primary these people. And they don't want to lose their cushy little jobs they got in the government. So they go around and they try to put a, put an icing on, on an imaginary cake to make people think that everything is going good, but no one's buying it. And so what do they do? They either flee the town hall or they stand there and they try to fight with, with bullshit facts that they created, you know, or they got handed to them by somebody. Okay, and everybody's laughing at it because they know it's, it doesn't make sense and it doesn't, it's not true. Okay, the people showed up at these, at these town hall meetings with more information about the truth than the people that, that are the guest talkers here or whatever. And, you know, the, the, you know, it's funny because you know how Trump says he likes the uneducated? Well, the educated are the ones coming out of the woodworks because they're the ones that have been paying attention here. And that means a lot of the Democrats, okay? The MAGA people are still kind of sitting in the corner. You know, basically, you know, like Marco Rubio did there in that Oval Office meeting there that blew up. You're just kind of sitting there with a scowl, you know, not saying anything. Okay, but that's what MAGA is doing right now while everybody else is, is, you know, raising old Mary hellier with, with these people. And I just feel like, you know, this is it's people that are being impacted directly from what Trump's been, what's, what he's been doing. Okay, these are people being impacted directly. And the ones that are still out there voting for Trump are like the, you know, the lawnmowers out there that are, you know, or like the grass cheering for the lawnmower. Okay, it's just, it's crazy. And I, and I don't see any logic behind any of that, you know? But I, I will say that it's time for articles of impeachment. That process must begin. Okay, we don't need to wait for his first hundred days in office. Okay, we don't need to wait for that. He's already earned the impeachment at this point. If it, if he was a Democrat, if it was any Democrat sitting in the White House as president, you know, the Republicans would already be putting that out on, on the table, you know, to impeach. You know this, okay? Why the Democrats are always the last to fucking wake up to reality of this, I don't know. Okay, again, when you got people in this country as mad as they are right now at Trump, it should be easier to get people behind you for this kind of thing. Okay. Why they're waiting, I don't know. But if they wait too long, you know, the damage could be, you know, irreversible. And, and it may be in some cases, I don't know. Especially on the international scale, I think a lot of things are going to be irreversible there. No matter who we get for a president, you know, again, if, if Trump allows it. But, you know, it's, it's not going to be easy to fix the mess that he's creating. And why wait until the mess is so goddamn big that it, you know, it would take, you know, several presidents to undo? Okay, we never, like I said, we, we can't keep consistent on anything. When we come, when it comes to fixing this country, you know, we can't stick to a plan because we keep swapping leaders all the fucking time. You know? We give more time for a senator, you know, in a term or congressman rather, you know, and, and the president only gets four years. I mean, who do you think ought to be in office longer? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it's just, I, you know, it seems like, oh, everyone's for it. But when you get a good president, you don't want that person out so soon, right? Before they actually get anything done. Okay, because the minute they get elected, they have to almost, soon after, start planning for the, the next campaign for the second term. You know? So I, I feel like, you know, there's a lot about our country that needs, needs fixing and it's not about budgets. Okay, I mean, sure, we spend a lot on the, on the military. Okay, and not enough on a lot of other things. But there's certainly, you know, you're certainly going to have, you know, But there's certainly, you know, you're certainly gonna have, you know, anomalies in the budget where people can accuse things of being fraud or wasteful, okay? Yeah. The, the military budget wastes a lot more money than people are willing to understand, okay? For what the military does, they get way more money than anybody in the budget, and they spent, they waste a lot more money than anybody else in the budget, okay? You don't know how many wasted projects began and ended. They cost us millions and millions of fucking dollars. They don't tell you that, okay? Because that's all hush-hush, right? You're not supposed to know. But that's all money that gets wasted, you know? Sometimes they make a new aircraft, you know, and all of a sudden, there's problems with it. Well, that's a project that gets scrapped and there goes millions of dollars down the fucking drain. You know what I'm saying? So the military, you know, wastes a lot of money. But, you know, these other programs out there, they could use that money that's wasted in the budget for the military, and they could bolster other things that we, we need and we know work, okay? And it's just, if you're looking for gutting waste and fraud, that's where I would begin, is in the fucking military, okay? And I, and I would, I would say, yeah, we, we have to start there. If we can cut some of that out, that's where we need to go. These other departments, they get so little, I mean, how could there possibly be a, an epidemic of fucking waste and fraud in these other departments that our budget covers? It doesn't make any sense. And like, like it was said, he hasn't, Musk hasn't found anything yet about fraud. What he's, he's in there doing is just cut, 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 okay? That's all he's doing. He's just cutting budgets. But he's not, he's not bothering to investigate to see if there was any fraud, okay? Or if there was any waste going on, okay? I'm sure that there were, you know, a few incidents here and there where things slipped under the radar, okay? But it wasn't deliberate, you know? Things like that happen in anything that you, you do, but it's not an epidemic of fucking waste and fraud, the way Musk and Trump and everybody else has been, has been painting this as, you know? We had oversight in our government over the spending of the, these things, and, you know, like it or not, they did, you know, you know, a good job. I'm not gonna say they did a stellar job, but they did a good job at it. But to come back and say, "Oh, they, you know, there just wasn't nobody there oversight", no, no, no. There was always somebody watching about where these things was being spent, okay? So I, I feel like it's really, you know, it's just, it's just a smoke job for what they really want to do. And like I said, it's about cutting taxes for the wealthy so they can keep more of our money that we pay, okay? Keep more of our money, you know, so that way, you know, they don't have to worry about taxes and stuff, okay? These people, they never pay their taxes and they still want cuts, you know? I don't know what to say to that, except, you know, greed has no bounds, okay? These people are filthy rich and their brains are just rotten with greed, you know? I mean, think about it. How many yachts do you need? How many homes do you need? How many fucking cars do you need? Okay? Is it really necessary? No, it isn't, okay? For some people, they can't even get the first home. But there's people out there that have a home in every fucking country on the planet, okay? You, you tell me, does that person need a tax break? Hell, no. No. All right. Anyway, that's it for today. So I hope everybody has a great rest of the week. Subscribe, comment, and share. Keep your ears open for health-related issues and treat each other with kindness and respect and be a community, help each other. I'll talk to you guys later, so take care, everybody.